I'll call the regular meeting the Oregon State Commission to order for Wednesday, April 15, 2015. If you join me in flag.
(inaudible) (inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, as has the Lord.
Shall I do the roll call?
Yeah, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner West is absent this evening. And Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here. So, we have ceremonies and proclamations. I do have one proclamation tonight, and as per our policy, we're not going to read the proclamations with all the whereas, we're just going to state that I'm signing a proclamation declaring April 2015 as Parkinson's Awareness Month, and we have Mr. Kevin Mansfield, the Oregon State Director, would like to speak a few words, please.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for signing this declaration for us, proclaiming April as Parkinson's Awareness Month. Sorry, I have Parkinson's. Bear with me a little bit.
You're fine.
I'm the Oregon State Director for Parkinson's Action Network. We're based out of Washington, DC, and what we do is educate people, as well as our representatives and our state senators, as to what we need. I was put out of work in 2001 due to Parkinson's, and I wasn't given very much information, which is real sad. All my doctor told me is that you have Parkinson's, come see me in six months. So, I did research, and that was the worst thing to do, because all you do is cure all the bad things. With that in mind, I came across Parkinson's Resources of Oregon, which I'm a facilitator with them, have been for the last 13 years. As Oregon State Director, I represent the state of Oregon with all the people with Parkinson's. We estimate that there's approximately 20,000 to 25,000 people living in Oregon with Parkinson's disease. With that in mind, once a year, we're able to go to Washington, DC. I, as a representative, get to go to Capitol Hill and talk to our representatives. While there, this year, a couple of weeks ago, I was invited to a special meeting at the White House, which was a great privilege. There, we had the first meeting, which was the fight against Parkinson's Disease, the White House of Champions of Change. On that, there's nine board members, a few of them have Parkinson's, as well as doctors. While we were there, we were able to get, or we received, a letter which I would like to read from President Obama. It says, "I send greetings to all those observing Parkinson's Awareness Month. Across our country, it is estimated that more than 500,000 Americans live with Parkinson's disease, a chronic progressive movement disorder. PD targets the central nervous system, and its symptoms worsen over time, and its effective effects are seen not only in the people battling the disease, but also the lives of their loved ones. As a nation, we must support people living with PD and work to protect their health and well-being. Researchers are still searching for cure, but by raising awareness and providing quality treatment, we can improve the lives of all those affected with PD. If we advance research and promote medical innovation, we can continue to unlock the mysteries of the brain and reach for a day when no one has to watch a loved one disappear behind the mask of Parkinson's. As you recognize Parkinson's Awareness Month, let us recommit to reducing the impact of this disease and pledge our support to those touched by it, their families, and the medical professionals working to defeat it. Signed, Barack Obama." I gave you a copy of this, sir. So, again, I want to thank you and the City Council for proclaiming April Parkinson's Awareness Month. You do have a group that meets here in Oregon City that has Parkinson's, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Pass that down to Katie. Okay, so, we're on to citizen comments. Do we have anybody on the list? Katie? So, on the floor, Mr. Gifford.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. I had a couple of comments. One is that, I guess it was earlier this week, or it must have been last week, whenever it was, recently, Chief Band came to talk to the Hill and Bell Neighborhood Association about the proposed community safety advancement fee, and it was well-received. But while he was there, the Fire District also was making their presentation regarding the bond, and their representative, Chris, I believe, no, Dave, Dave, from Station 15, was giving his presentation, and it's awkward to have two asks at the same time, but there it was, and so, but I made the comment that when I, and some of the neighbors were unaware that CFD, Clackamas Fire District 1, is an internationally-recognized fire district, one of the finest fire districts in the world, and very proud of that, very proud of that. But I went to a safety event put on by, I guess it was North Clackamas Chamber, a couple of weeks ago, where they had, where Chief Band was speaking, as well as two other police chiefs from the region, and the sheriff, and so on, and afterwards, one of the, and of course, Chief Band did a good job for us, as usual, but afterwards, one of the Fire District people came up to me, and I won't mention his name, but he's very well-respected and well-known, and he said, "You know, William," he says, "I deal with a lot of emergency responders all throughout the county, and the Oregon City Police Department is the finest group that I can ever hope to work with." And I was very proud of that, very proud of that. And in that regard, at that same meeting, I mentioned the fact about the app that is available on our phone called PulsePoint, and I don't know if the community is as aware of PulsePoint as they can be. It's a free app. It's pulse, just like the pulse on your wrist, P-O-I-N-T, PulsePoint, and you can specifically ask for information from the Fire District, or just for this region, and so on, and you can find out when collisions are, and it's just amazing that how fast it responds to information. So, I hear a ding on my phone, and I hear fire engines. It's, they tell me where the accidents are, and when they occur, and everything, and I just would want to pass that along, and hope that more people are aware of that app for being aware of what's going on in their community, that's PulsePoint. That's all.
Thank you, William.
Thank you. Mayor Holliday.
Mr. Shaw, do you have a question?
Well, I would like to recognize somebody in our audience that's visiting this evening.
Feel free, go ahead.
Okay. We have a guest, a special guest here tonight, Whitney Iverson and her dad, Dane. Whitney has an interest in government, and she wanted to come this evening. I invited her, and Dane is a teacher at the high school, and stuff, so thanks for coming this evening.
Okay, that's the only citizen comment? All right, moving on to optioning the agenda. Everybody fine with the agenda? Okay, so move on to public hearings. We have 15-210, ordinance for introduction, 14-1003, amended title 15, Building Construction Code, Chapter 15.28, signs of the Oregon City Municipal Code. The legislative planning file is L-14-01. Mr. Conkle?
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. At our last meeting, we discussed the proposed amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Sign Code. We made those changes that were requested, specifically dealing with A-frames, extending them to include the mixed-use corridor 1. We had a discussion about murals, which we did not change, and so, with those changes, we believe we've addressed the issues that have been raised by the Commission, and we are requesting approval of the first reading of proposed ordinance, number 14-1003. Laura and myself are here to answer any questions, if there are any.
You don't get to go through the PowerPoint again? We can dig it out if you want.
I think we've wore that out.
Through this exhaustive process, we've had thirty-seven. Okay, enough already. So... Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, we got to open the public hearing. Are there any comments? Then we'll close the public hearing. What? Was there a hand? Oh, well, come on up. You're supposed to fill out a form, and...
I know why.
And I know you know you are.
My name is Bob Mahoney. I live in Oregon City. The Planning Commission and its deliberation with the Sign Code had one outstanding consideration, and that was, the code is going to be as good as our enforcement of it, and I think the City Council has a golden opportunity here to enter into a partnership with the business community that does most of the signage in the city, and rather than enforcement, 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 just have a partnership with them ongoing through the process of education, and not so much negotiation, you know, enforcement, and the code's the code. It should be recognized and understood and enforced. But it's, all the Planning Commission was really trying to do in a very limited sense, because it's had so few tools, because of the nature of freedom of speech and design, lack of, we don't have a manner in which we can design signs for people, is to just control the clutter. That's really what it's all about, is just controlling the clutter. And so, if we can just engage the public and have that partnership, so it's sort of self-pleasing, and I know that's pie-in-the-sky type of stuff, but it's going to, I think if we, through the administration of things, get the public to self-please and assist the city in administering the Sign Code, we're going to be way ahead of the curve, and other communities are in the same boat, so we're not alone in that regard. So, that's what they were concerned about, was the control of clutter, and pretty much that's it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your efforts on the Planning Commission to go through this too.
A lot of telling the people.
Yes, thank you.
Put their pouring water on that one.
Yes.
Okay, so now I will close the public hearing, unless there's somebody else. Okay? So, at the pleasure of the Commission, what would you like to do?
I would like to move to approve the first reading of the ordinance.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Bill?
Ordinance number 14-1003, an ordinance amending Title 15, Buildings in Construction, Chapter 15.28, signs of the Oregon City Municipal Code.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Rigs, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Motion carries. So, moving on to request for continuance for Lynnham and Leland Road, Myers Road Corridor Plan. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Last work session, we discussed at length the capacity, the intersection control analysis for Leland Road, Myers Road, no, Leland, Lynn, Warner Parrot, Warner Milney, and Central Point Road. If you remember, the City Commission heard the corridor plan before, there was some public comment about need for further analysis, and while that wasn't typically what we'd do in a corridor plan at this point in the game, we decided to move forward with that, and we hired Wallace Engineering and DKS and Associates to complete that additional study work. They did that, reported on that at the work session. We need another couple of weeks to integrate that report, that intersection control analysis into our overall corridor report, and we're planning to bring that back, first meeting in May, so we're asking for a continuance, and an opportunity for anybody that wants to speak from the community to make public comment.
So, Bill, is this something we have to do as a motion?
It's a legislative action. Yeah, it's better to do as a motion, to a time and place certain.
Okay, anybody have a question for Mr. Lewis? Then I would entertain a motion.
But do you have to open the public?
This isn't a public hearing.
It actually is scheduled for a public hearing.
Oh, okay, I apologize. So, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any citizens that wish to comment? Seeing none, close the public.
Betty would like to speak.
Oh, I didn't see Betty back there. I'm sorry, Betty.
I'm sorry. I didn't think about that. I was so interested in what you were doing.
Were that exciting?
It was fascinating.
Whippin'.
Well, I thought I'd bring a little excitement to the meeting.
There we go.
You know I have a vested interest in this whole corner.
Before we start, can you give your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Betty Savage. The owner of the Savage Mini-Mall, and I do have a big interest in this project. I'm not against it, but I'm not yet for it, because there seems to be a lot of little things that affect the shopping mall, as you know, mainly approaches and access to those, and I think that the last time we pointed out, but I see some new faces here, so, last time, we pointed out the fact that large trucks deliver to our mall every day. It's not a thing where we can say, "You can come on this day to deliver to us, and you have to be here at this hour." This is not done in this type of business. It's an ongoing thing. Most of those trucks are large, because they just don't deliver to us, they deliver to us, to other people at the same schedule. In a sense of that, the trucks have to have a certain radius to get in and get out, and when they come in, it kind of set me at first, when I seen how large they were, because they take up a lot of the parking lot itself, but on the essence of it all, we've worked it out over the many, many years that we've been there. But the access to getting in and out is our most important part of this, and also, we have a lot of people in the neighborhood who walk to the mall, and also, we have several people who come in in wheelchairs, and this has been a big point to us, too, because those are our steady customers, and they're there every day, and so, we like to look out for those people also. So, whatever goes on with this in the future, I'd like very much for us to work together and work it out, so that it's good for the city, because the city here needs a lot of help on different developments, and also, good for the mall itself and the people who participate in coming to it, so.
I don't know if you had an opportunity to watch the discussion that we had last Commission meeting on this, but I want you to know that I specifically said that we were going to have to fix this so that it didn't impact your property, so whether we had to move it north and east, or north and west, or whatever the case is, that I have a great interest in the fact that you and Bill have been here for a long, long time, and that we're going to make sure that we have the absolute least possible impact to your site.
I noticed you stretched that long, long time. I also thank you for that. I think also that I brought with me a copy of the previous, copy of the previous map that shows on it, and I will give a copy to Mr. Lewis, so he can make sure you receive it, as to what we gave the last time, and I feel like here I'm giving again. I seem like I'm the only parcel there, according to your things so far, that is the giver.
Well, I think the city's going to take more of an impact on the Mount Pleasant property, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I will close the public hearing, again. Where are we at? There we are. Okay, so, is there any discussion on this? So, motion?
I move to continue.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Motion carries. Under General Business Resolution 15-10, authorizing city manager or his or her designated to accept deeds of dedication of land in fee as easements or covenants, as required as conditions for granting land use approval. Mr. Lewis?
Again, thank you for the time. This particular item is fairly straightforward. In the past, the county surveyors always accepted these parcels, tracts, stormwater tracts, through the plat process, so on the plat, they would actually list the parcel and list it being dedicated to the city. Now, because of state regulation, they're requiring that, in addition to that, a deed be recorded for that tract in the city's name, and so, like any property transaction, typically, those need to come. In fact, our next item is one of those examples of that. Item 8B is a property deed, tract, stormwater, so we either need to bring those to you every single time we record a plat with a tract on it, or our preference would be to get authorization to move forward with those. Those have always been pretty straightforward, as a process of recording through the plat, so we're asking you to give us that, or give the city manager that authorization now, and we'll, you know, we'll move through the regular land use process, as usual, on these tracts. So, there'll be other opportunities if, you know, before the plat records, for you to comment on those tracts, but since it's going through the land use process and the engineering design process, the construction process, it seems like by the time we get to the plat, we're pretty much, pretty much done, so.
Questions?
Would that be on, would that be on a consent agenda at all, or just want to keep doing?
No, this resolution authorizes the city manager to do it without that.
Okay. All right.
Waiting.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 15-218.
15-10, item number?
Item number seven.
It's Resolution 15-10. The item number is 15-218.
Oh, okay. Resolution number 15-10.
Second.
There you go.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Ah, what happened to my screen? Okay. So, we're on to the consent agenda.
Just, there is an item 8B, same topic. I don't know, I'm thinking you need to act on it. It says stormwater facility in Lindsey-Anna State Subdivision.
Yeah, but it's on the consent agenda, so it'll go...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Along with everything else. I have just one question, because I apparently haven't seen the resolution. What's the Sea Lion Resolution?
That's the one we talked about last time on my reports, that it's the one that's very similar to the one Clackamas County simply adopted recently, and that's to encourage the federal delegation to work on the Sea Lion problem.
You had one change to it, and I added that change in.
Yeah, I remember now.
With the tribes, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Takes us to Communications. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I have just a few things for my report tonight. First of all, I get a daily bulletin from the International City Manager Association, and it has lots of helpful information in it about what other cities are doing around the country, and one thing I noted that I, about our library, the top 10 largest cities in the country, and among those are San Diego, Chicago, Phoenix, Dallas, Philadelphia, Los Angeles, San Antonio. Of that group, New York City is on that list, and it lists the number of hours that their libraries are open in these large cities, and the highest city in the nation of those largest ones is San Antonio, with the average hours open per week of 56.5. The lowest is San Jose, California, at 35.8. The average is 44. Chicago, Phoenix, Dallas, and Philadelphia are all below 40, 48, and Oregon City is at 56.
Wow.
So, I thought that was kind of a nice tidbit, and I just wanted to thank Maureen Cole, and also, many of the volunteers that work at the library. You know, that operation is not a big-ticket operation. It's very efficient for the service it delivers, and to be competitive with those large cities on that service level, may be kind of proud of our library folks, so just thank them when you get a chance. And also, tonight, you approved on your consent calendar an application for a planning grant. This is the Planning Development Grants for Metro, and our application is going out tomorrow, and I have a copy of the letter we're sending, so I'm just going to pass that around. That is a $400,000 grant for design work at the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, so we're hopeful that we'll be successful on that application. Also, wanted to give you an update. Yesterday, Mr. Lewis and I, and Lance Palason, our Right-Away Coordinator, along with Mayor Holliday, we all attended the Tri-City Advisory Committee meeting for the Tri-City Sewer District, and there were a few surprises at the meeting, and I wanted to let the Commission know, because some of these are items of public record that we're going to have to talk to you about what you want us to do, and get some direction from you. But one of the things that we learned is about three weeks ago, Mr. Lewis had asked the interim director, then interim director, Greg Geist, who now is the permanent director, for some information about the 2008 IGA, because that had some effect on governance, and I believe Commissioner Smith and then Commissioner Nocita voted against that, and thus, the Commission voted for it. But nevertheless, there was a lot of confusion about, during our push for House Bill 2800, you'll recall, at the chamber, I believe it was Commissioner Savis, was talking about all the meetings that they had at that time, and how that agreement evolved, and I've had many people in the business community come up and ask me, "How did we get here with this district, and how did this happen?" And to us, I think Mr. Lewis really summed it up for me one day, when he said, "It's sort of like cooking a frog in water. If you turn up the temperature really gradually, and you have all these amendments over the years to these foundation agreements, when you get to the end of 10 or 15 years of amendments, you have an agreement that's really not very much like the original intent." And so, we were just trying to do our due diligence and research that, and John asked Greg Geist if he would produce records of those meetings from 2008, when that dialogue took place, and yesterday, we received a bit of a bombshell from Tri-City, when they told us that they did not have any minutes or meeting notices of those meetings. They also said that they hadn't kept public records on that before 2010, and we're not even sure since 2010 what they've kept, but that was kind of an eye-opener, I guess would be the way we would put it. We were very shocked by that, so the city attorney's been...
I used the word flabbergasted. Flabbergasted that we have a public meeting, and there's no recordings, there's no minutes, there's no notices. It's as if those meetings never took place.
Well, and for me, it kind of connected the dots, because so many of the business community that we deal with here in our community, when we do something like adjust our SDCs, or, you know, we have a discussion about the Sign Code, we have to turn out. We have the chamber here, we have the Business Alliance, we have folks that are large employers, they show up and they give us their opinion. That's because they know we're talking about it, and unfortunately, in this case, there was not much opinion, because people didn't know. One of my colleagues on the committee mentioned that they had dozens of these meetings, which, so that it shouldn't have been a surprise to anyone, but that didn't make us feel better that they'd had more of them instead of fewer. It was just upsetting that the public wasn't informed, so...
And let me ask you a question, David. So, Tri-Cities has been around since the mid-'70s?
Late-'70s.
Late-'70s. So, in theory, there have been no real recorded anything, other than actions that the county board may have taken as the Board of Tri-City Sewer District, but any of those regular conversations about, you know, rates and SDCs and all that stuff, at least according to what they said, they haven't kept any records prior to 2010.
That's what they said.
Advisory Committee or the...
That was the Advisor Committee that they were talking about.
But it's the Advisory Committee where theoretically, where the actual discussion and the actual work takes place.
We also don't know if they had any records of CCSD 1, which is another sewer district that they manage, and then, one of our affirmative defenses to their lawsuit against us for Right-Away is that they failed when they, Tri-City is suing our city, as many people know, over our Right-Away charges. Well, we discovered in the litigation that they don't adjourn, they didn't adjourn, out of their Board of County Commissioners meeting, and adjourn into a Tri-City meeting, and they, so Tri-City... And they, so Tri-City never authorized the lawsuit, so here we had a lawsuit that was filed with, by somebody who didn't have standing to do it. So just last month, they went back, kind of at the end, at the end of the briefing period, they went back and amended their actions by retroactively approving the lawsuit in the proper fashion. All this is being done with public money, which is.
I really meant to pay my taxes.
Which is such a disappointment to me, because it's pointless. But anyway, that's, that's part of the reason, I think, that you want changes in the governance structure at, at Tri-City, so we can have some accountability.
And, and I would assume taking minutes and all of that in public and announcing the meetings is in their bylaws. I would assume that they have not been.
The bylaws are approved by the county commission? So.
They admitted, they admitted in open session that these were public meetings, and therefore, as, as a public meeting, they're, they're covered under the, is it seventy-three or seventy-four?
Or it's chapter 192.
Yeah, but, you know, we've had a public records and, and meetings law for a long, long time.
Certainly since early seventies, Watergate.
Well, well, exactly. So I think that would really help the whole lawsuit issue, just that they haven't been abiding by any of that.
Well, yeah. But then again, if we had adequate representation, we probably wouldn't have sued ourselves. So that's, that's one thing I haven't seen a city do, is sue itself. So moving on, one other thing that happened at Tri-City, there was another somewhat of a bombshell, because about a year ago, a little over a year ago, the Tri-City Advisory Committee, I believe this might have been one of the only, if not the only increase that I voted affirmatively for about a year ago, and that was to increase their SDCs. I believe it's currently around 2,400, and the proposal was to increase their SDCs to 3,800. Well, we just learned yesterday that they did not take that recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, and the board never took action on it. So because of that, we've lost the district, the ratepayers have lost all of those increased SDC revenues for that entire period.
Do we have any estimate of what that total might be is in losses?
It would be the difference times, the difference between the 24 and 38 times however many permits were issued in, within the district in that period, so.
Could be a significant amount of dollars.
So they asked us then if we wanted to reaffirm, again, our earlier vote, and Mayor Holliday reminded them that I have a different set of elected officials than I had a year ago, which I was well aware of. And so we, we said no for that, not only for that reason, but they've also, since then, as you know, proposed much higher rate increases than they projected last year. And to me, the rate increases and the SDCs sort of go together, so I don't think we can really vote on one without understanding the total impact. The director, Mr. Geist, though, did kindly offer to send me some sort of a white paper or proposal that would explain their position and what the options might be as they see it, and then I would provide that to you and get direction.
But we couldn't really pin them down on whether this is based on the old rates or the new rates, or some hybrid of that. So in my opinion, you know, rates and the SDCs are a discussion you have to have together. You can't have them in isolation.
And as far as the reason that they didn't advance the recommendation, at least to the board, which is their job, they did note that they'd had a couple of different, I think two or three interim directors, you counted them out one day.
I believe it's four.
Four of them, it was five.
Currently, I'm looking for a fifth.
And so with that kind of turnover, maybe there was something slipped through the cracks, but.
Actually, Greg's permanent.
Is he permanent?
Yeah, they made him permanent.
So anyway, that's the, that's the update from Tri-City. We'll keep working on it and see what happens. And then, last but not least, I've asked Mr. Kabeisman to provide with you, for you, an update on, just on the standing of the city's position with regard to marijuana regulation. It's an evolving process, but we haven't talked about it for a while, so I just wanted you to hear from him on that.
You're likely to hear some things as, as law changes, so I just want to give you a quick update. If you remember, there are two aspects of marijuana. One is medical, one is recreational. Marijuana's been around for a little bit. Recreational just passed last November, and they're working their way through the system. Last year, last year around this time, the, the city adopted a moratorium on medical facilities. That expires in May, and so that may raise some concerns, but let me talk, talk our way through it, and I think we're in pretty good shape, and make sure we're on the same thing. First, recreational. The, the measure ninety-one does two things. First, there's a personal exemption. As of July one, it authorizes citizens to have a certain amount of marijuana in possession. Doesn't allow, authorize transfers, doesn't, and I see Sergeant Gates, if I get it wrong, let me know. But it, it says essentially, you're allowed to have a certain amount in your possession. It doesn't allow transfers. That will take effect July one. There's not too much the city can do about that.
What do you mean transfers?
So you can't sell it, you can't give it to a friend, you can't, well, essentially, you can't sell it.
Okay, all right.
So that's July one. The other part of recreational marijuana is there eventually going to be retail stores authorized in the state. That is not likely to occur to some time. The measure required the Oregon Liquor Control Commission to authorize rules and begin accepting applications for those stores and grows as of January one. It's anticipated, last I heard, that new rules, draft rules should be coming out in another month or two, but it's unlikely we're going to see anything until, you know, next year, maybe around this time is, is when you're likely to see some things. With the caveat, legislature's in session, they've been talking about these things. All of this might change. Right now, we have no idea what there's, what's going to happen. But, you know, so when the legislature finishes, we'll come back with an update. But that's recreational. Personal use exemption is going to come into effect July. Retail sales are going to come into effect probably around this time next year, depending on how the rules comes out. Let's transfer to medical. Medical marijuana program has been around for a while. There was a bill a few years ago that authorized medical dispensaries. The city has taken the position that we cannot issue licenses for a medical dispensary because they violate federal law. That is still in effect, and City of Cave Junction down in southern Oregon actually challenged the medical facility and, medical facilities authorization, and the court down there upheld it. It's been appealed to the Court of Appeals, and it's in the process, again, about another year or so before we're going to get a decision. So right now.
Hold on, I'm a little confused by that. So who, who sued who over what in Cave Junction?
So the City of Cave Junction sued the state of Oregon, saying, we don't have to issue any licenses for, asking the court for a declaration, declaratory judgment, saying, we don't have to issue any, any licenses for, for marijuana dispensaries, and the court agreed with the city.
Based on?
Based on federal law.
Based on federal, okay.
They said, regardless of what the state says, you, city, have the right to say no, because it violates federal law. And that's what the Josephine County Circuit Court said. It's on appeal, we'll get a decision in a year or so. But essentially, what I want to tell you is, the, the message takeaway from yours, things are changing, but we don't have to worry too much, because we're protected for medical by the, the federal exemption, and recreational retail outlets aren't for another year or so, and, you know, let's keep an eye on what the legislature does, but right now, I think we're, we're in an okay spot.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
As far as little reports, is that what we're doing?
We're in, we're in, we're in communications.
Communications, all right. Well, I did go to the monthly CIC meeting, and then also went to the developer forum that, or a friend back there, staff put on back there, and.
Mr. Underwood?
Mr. Underwood, I'm trying to get his name, thank you. Mr. Underwood put on, it was, that's the first one I've been to, and it's enlightening. And I wish there, I, I think there was probably more developers, builders there at the first one, but I think that there should be more there, because I think that they would have kind of found out a few things that would have made it a lot smoother for them when they tried to put projects through the city. Did go through the marijuana forum at the high school, some troubling statistics from there, I didn't write them down, but it was not good. And then did go to the meeting at Gladstone, where there was, the other day, I think there was three of their city commissioners and the city manager, and we were talking about how we can kind of all work together and stuff, basically. It was kind of like the right-of-way and several other issues and stuff. So it was good. I think we're making progress with, with our neighbors there, a good bunch of guys, so, that's all I got.
Mr. Polly?
Monday, May thirteenth, this last Monday was Arbor Day, and we are.
April.
April. What did I say? Okay, I'm not trying to hurry things along here. Time moves fast enough by itself. And we are Tree City USA for the third year in a row. It was, there weren't a lot of general people from the community that did come, but there were several groups of young people that were there. Some honor society people, JR OTC was there, and there were many other groups, too. So we planted trees, and the rain held off until just as we were getting our trees in the hole, and then I did my little exit. But it was, it was great. Trees, since I have moved here, I've seen a lot of trees added to Oregon City, especially in the parks. There are some parks like Chapin Park, where people just don't go there on hot days, because there was no trees. So now we've added trees in there, and I think this year will be the year that they'll actually provide some shade. So there's been a great effort on the Parks Department and just the city in general, trying to get more trees into our area, and it's really beautifying the city greatly. So good job on that. Main Street News, I am on the Main Street Board, I'm the commission representative, and we do have new board members now, so it's great, we're growing the board. And we are still in that committee, we're trying to reinvigorate the committee structure. So a couple of the new board members are actually committee chairs, one's on promotion and one's on design. So we're having, we figured out our work agenda for the whole year, and it's pretty rigorous, and so there's going to be a lot of great new things going down on Main Street. And the EID proposal is going to come back to us, so you'll be hearing more about that.
Commissioner Smith?
Attended the Erma Tinger Strategy Meeting that Scott had with our consultant Matt Davis from Architectural Research, Research Group. Is that right?
Close enough.
Okay, close enough.
Close enough, I forgot.
So basically, we had a meeting with partners from some of the different heritage sites. Gail was there from Emmett Oregon Trail Interpreters Center, and Denise from McLaughlin Memorial Association. There was several representatives from Prac there, and some from the Friends Group, or the, the group that's organizing a Friends Group for the Erma Tinger House. And that's basically just a continuation of the work they're doing to talk about possible governance structure and programming for the, the opening of the Erma Tinger House in the future. And that's about it. Had a lot of tourists in town.
For what, Mr. Smith?
A lot of strange tourists. Oh, you know, just walking around, looking for ghosts.
Ghosts, yeah.
Ghostly people.
The Ghost Conference.
Like at this conference.
All right, well, I'll take mine. So since no one else mentioned it, we did do the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust grants a week ago, this last Monday. Fortunately, this time around, we had enough money to fund all of those different applications. We are going to be redoing the process for next year, so there will be some criteria that those projects will have to meet to line up with what our goals are for tourism and for ongoing ability to continue their operations. So we're looking at the, at the Civic Improvement Trust as something that's going to provide seed money, but is not a place that a group is going to be able to come back year after year after year after year. They need to make their events self-sustaining over time.
What make it what?
What?
I used, I used the word in the correct context, by the way. Self-sustaining. So moving on, we had the Willamette Falls Legacy Partners Group meeting. Actually, this was a, a site meeting we had with, with George Heidegurken and his, his staff. It was just me and David and, and I believe Tony. So we had a nice conversation, and, you know, we're looking forward to helping him move along in process. And then we had, obviously, some other things, but I skipped impact this week. We had our Oregon City Budget Committee meeting on Monday, and I wish to thank Wyatt Parno and his staff, especially for all of the hard work and being able to make it simple enough that we were able to process that and get out the door in less than two hours, which, when I was on the city commission fifteen years ago, I recall three nights and nine or 10 hours to go through the budget. So we've gotten to the point now where, you know, we're doing a biennial budget, so we only have to do it every two years, and it's much simpler, much easier to read, and you can actually go online and see it, and it actually makes sense. So thanks to Wyatt and his staff. We heard that David and I went to the Tri-Cities meetings, and, so I don't need to go over that again. We did have a, more than a half a day yesterday, doing a tour of the Willamette Falls Legacy Project site with staff members from our federal partners, Senator Wyden, and Commissioner Schrader, and Commissioner, Congressman Schrader and Congressman.
Blumenau?
I think there was somebody from Blumenau staff, I, I can't recall. And then numerous, numerous federal agencies, EPA, HUD, the Small Business Administration, USDA, there were a whole bunch of folks. And so we walked the site and then came back and had a very good discussion about how, and it's going to be Senator Wyden's staff person who's going to kind of take the lead in championing, bringing all those federal partners and agencies together to help us not only with the Riverwalk, but possibly with housing and urban development and other kinds of things that we might be able to accomplish on the site. So that was a very good meeting, had lots of good contacts, and we expect to move, continue to move forward with the project. That's all I have.
Mayor, I did neglect one thing in my reports. One of our mid-level staff, not a department head, nominated the city as one of the, one of the top employers in Oregon. And Oregon, the Oregonian does a competition every year, I think a couple of years Kaiser won that award, and there, there's different categories. And so, and then they, then after that, they start surveying all your employees to see if the rest of them agree with the person that nominated. So our employees are going to be surveyed, you have to have at least 35% of your employees participate, and it's apparently pretty competitive. I know Kaiser, my work, my wife works for them, and they made quite a big deal about their, that accolade. So that, that was kind of nice that it came from one of our employees. I had no idea we were going to be nominated until I got the call, so that was a nice thing. I don't, not sure we have a very good chance in the, in the end, but it was nice to be nominated by one of our staff, so.
Okay.
I have one more announcement, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to announce that the, there is a city commission position vacancy beginning tomorrow, and that will, we'll start advertising for that tomorrow, and we'll receive applications until, the deadline will be May 21st at 5:00 PM. So we will send out notification via email, there'll, it'll be listed on our website, we'll put it in the Oregon City News, we'll send it out via flash alert, any way we can get the word out.
So we are looking for all qualified candidates. And Bill, what is the, the only requirement is, is the 12 months residency, and where does that start and stop at? Is it 12 months from the application date, or is it?
I believe it's 12 months from the appointment date.
From the appointment date?
Right, so if you, basically, when they take office, you need to have been a resident for 12 months. Certainly, if they're, by application date, they're, they should be fine, but there may be.
So generally speaking, you need to have lived in the city for 12 months prior, so that's the only, other than that, just upright and breathing is fine, as can be told by most of us.
And you're going to sit right by me.
So is there anything else?